Order the regular reading of the Holy School Board on Monday, January tenth, five thirty PM. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and its true will.
All right, Mr. Wilson, you did such a good job at our work session. We'll have you read the mission statement again.
The mission of all the public schools is to bring together students, class, staff, and community to provide a quality education where they emphasis on developing what's a potential of the individual.
All right, we have open forum. Obviously, we have a large crowd, but Hans, I guess it's you. Do you have anything that says that? Well, we have another, another chance at the end here. Anyone who wants to jump in, those are kind. Okay. In that case, we'll go to approval of agenda, please.
I'd like to watch the approve.
All right, there's a motion by Nathan Anderson to approve. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Pam Disner. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next we'll have the approval of our routine business items such as consent agenda, board bills, and the approval of minutes. On our, motion to approve by Nathan Anderson.
Second.
Second by Wayne Wilson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, our next one is our resolution for accepting gifts. Uh, this, uh, this, uh, month, we have the Holy American Legion donating, donating thirty-one hundred dollars for Holy High School DC and New York trip in November of twenty twenty-five. I would take a motion to accept this gift, please. A motion by Alyssa, second, please.
Second.
Second by Stephanie. Excellent, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number eight, which is our revised budget for twenty twenty-five. I'll hand it off to our admin members here.
Ms. Naska.
Ms. Naska, perfect. Ms. Naska, all yours.
You guys all have a copy of the budget in your folders, I believe. So I'm just gonna go down the line here. General fund, last year at, um, the prelim, not last, last school year, for the preliminary budget, we had our, we had projected to deficit spend about three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This year, we're looking at deficit spending four hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. And, um, the, the big addition to that has to do with the special education, um, thing, uh, service that we need to provide. So that was a lot higher than we had anticipated, so that's the big driving cause of that deficit there. Food service is looking really good still. Uh, we got free lunches and Lori has been great at, she's received a few grants. Uh, so we're looking at revenue over, uh, surplus of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Community ed is looking at a deficit of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, I did not budget as much revenue in community ed for some of our summer programs, just because I didn't know for sure what it would look like with all of the, um,
Yeah.
indoor ear quality project going on and all the space being used. Uh, another big driving factor there is just our preschool program. It's an expensive program to fund and it's based on fees, so it's hard to make sure that we're con, let's, you know, we are looking at prices to see how we can be most competitive, but again, we have to be competitive to get the kids to come here versus their surrounding districts. So high salaries happen to be, because we need licensed teachers now in community ed, so that's a driver there. The construction fund, that looks really large because our bond proceeds are gonna be going into there. And then the budgeted expenses for that are just the payments that we have to make to Psychologic right now. That's all I budgeted for in there, um, because the majority of our payments are going to be in fiscal year twenty-six. So I didn't put them here. Our debt service fund, that's just the fund that we pay all of our bonds and leases out of, so we always have a little surplus there, seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Our custodial fund, uh, that's usually a net neutral based on that's what our, we pay a lot of scholarships out of that from local area, uh, from local businesses and other things, so, uh, net neutral at a zero for over/under. Our dental fund, that's new this year. We, since we went to self-funded dental, so this will have to be looked at again at the end of the year to make sure, because it, we just started it in January and we're paying based on claims rather than just a set premium every month. So some months have high claims, some months may not. So this is a good time at year end to look at it again to see our, our dental price is the correct price, uh, do we need to raise, can we lower, we, and then so at the end of the year here, it would be a good opportunity to look at that to see where we're really at, but as of now, I'm projecting a nine thousand percent surplus in the dental fund.
Nine thousand dollars?
Nine, yes. Our OPEC trust is our retirement fund, um, that we pay our retirees out of for, uh, some of their retiree incentives, and so that is also a positive, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So overall, added all of the funds together, the projected fund balance in June, on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, we're looking at twenty-two million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-five cents.
Compared to last year's ten thousand and change? Or ten, two, ten million and change?
Right, that's, yes.
So this is a positive movement, is that a fair?
Well, it's positive only in the fact of the flip of construction fund. Without that, it wouldn't be that high, obviously, but, um, that's not, that's just the overall fund balance, not Fund One.
Yeah.
Anything like that. So yeah, Fund One is looking at a four million, eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollar balance at the end of the year.
Will this move us to our twelve percent pop, policy, um,
Probably.
Instead of the, at ten where we are now?
Probably not yet, 'cause we're still deficit spending, but we have plans to correct the deficit spending and next year we hope to see an increase again, 'cause we still are having to draw down our fund balance to account for all the, the extra expenses.
And we don't know what we're getting from the legislature.
And also remember next year is in negotiations if it kills.
Any other questions for Ms. Naska tonight?
So is the community ed balance always in a negative? Is that a normal thing? And is it that amount?
It depends a lot. Some schools will take money out of the general fund to cover the deficit of the community ed fund, which I believe the district used to do, but since we've started, since we've gotten into this situation where we're overspending, we have not done that. So it's building upon last year's deficit as well. It all just depends on your, community ed's a hard fund because it is so many fee-based programs. We don't get a lot of funding for community ed.
I think we used to do twenty thousand dollars a year, right? Is this one right?
Well, I thought last year we did twenty-five.
So last year, what we-
Sample, sample managed.
What we, how we did that is because with our early childhood special education program, we get funding for those students and it goes to the O-one fund. So we're just paying back the O-four fund because they're the ones, they would lose those spots that other kids could fill because we have to, those students that are coming in under ECSE get that spot paid for with the funding. So they don't get that fee that they would for everything else. We are, sorry, the O-one fund is getting paid for, not community ed. So we paid community ed back with the funds we received for those students.
To answer your question though, can you run in the negative, community, in the community education, you can. There are two funds that you can, um, community education and then the second one is food service. So the majority of community ed though is like fee-based, correct?
Yes.
So how can we be negative if people are, are paying their fees to have their kids in these programs?
Because we have to have licensed teachers in preschool and our class sizes aren't very big, but we're paying a large salary to all of these teachers that there's just no way that we could expect our families to pay them to cover it or nobody would be able to afford.
So look at it kinda like a, a lottery, right? If you want them in our preschool, so they come to our school, it's kind of the process, right?
It costs more trust to bring the program to them than, than we get.
But our goal then is to favor a role in our school, which obviously then affects our, our income.
And it's a great ring around. I mean, we just had our kindergarten and our preschool round up. These people come to our school and those are the same kids that thirteen years later walk across the stage. They, they stay here because they believe in the program.
Our community ed is kind of, it's the nature of the beast. It's kind of where we're at, you know, we, I, I think it's better to focus on the community part. This is, when we, when we look at our mission statement, right, this is, this is the community part of our mission statement is our community ed. And what we can give back to the community, instead of just the people, you know, we play K through our preschool through senior, um, this is all the other people in our community. And hopefully this keeps them in our community and then they have families in our community and then, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's part marketing almost, I think it's a healthier implication.
Well, our community ed department is a great department. They do a lot of great things in our school and spend it that way for years.
Yes.
So, I mean, looking at it that way, but just wondering if what we can do to equal that number a little bit more than what it is.
Do we prefer like the reduced fee students, do we, do we, or is it just we have the cut rate?
Um, no.
They do.
Someone, like, so the preschool, like Erin talked about, was some of the scholarships, um, but that's-
Well, the other thing is some of their involved investors, they use to keep that.
And, and another thing would be to go to your legislature and tell them, we need more scholarships, we need more help here. This isn't, this deficit isn't anything new. I, I, I don't think that community ed should be expected to make money, they break even, you know, but it, but it's tough and it, and it isn't tough because of our community ed program, because I know what people look for. We wanna cover the costs, this, that. I mean, they're very, very diligent in that. It's, it's the preschool and the, um, wraparound program, all our extra programs that oftentimes bring students who, um, would need special help that they can bring them up to par before they get to kindergarten sometimes.
And families depend on community ed.
Can I add something?
Oh, please, yes.
So the general fund used to contribute, you know, for years and then it stopped. I would say, I don't know if it was COVID or just pre-COVID around that time. And the food service O-four fund has a pretty healthy fund balance and then the general fund shifted from making that transfer to help support, which is early talent, like your ECSE age of preschool. And so since that, you know, contribution wasn't even like that fund has been being spent down year to year. And now we're at a point where now it's even a negative because of that transfer not being paid for coming these five years. So I think that's where now you're really seeing it as a negative because they got the spending down year to year because, you know, you said it's early talent, ECSE, preschool cards, I don't pay myself, but that's where you're seeing it now, you're seeing it now as a negative, as a whole, it's a whole fine. A whole bar.
I think it's a weird place where community ed, that's kind of the donations and adding supplies and whether that happens to be like, I mean, that's a very, very way to, we need to say thank you.
Is the wraparound care discounted for families too, or is that something that wraparound care is one straight, pay, and like everybody pays the same for the extra care, like they go to preschool in the morning, then they go to like a daycare, like with Tiffany? Do they pay the same amount no matter who you are, or is that discounted?
They will receive it, like, so they can receive a discount as well.
Okay.
Whether that's a scholarship or a traditional.
Okay.
And the hard thing about community education is that the amount that we receive from the state has been stagnant for years and finally we had an increase maybe two years ago, but it's very, very small.
So the funding received from the state, in a sense, doesn't even be for one teacher.
No.
It's very- It's very small.
Any other questions or comments on this? All right, well, thank you, Ms. Naska. In that case, uh, I would take a motion to approve the revised budget.
I'd like a motion to approve budget.
All right, motion by Wayne, second by Nathan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Excellent, motion carries. Next, we'll have our policies required review. This is the third, or excuse me, second reading and call for, uh, comment on the following policies, which is five thirty-four, the school meals policy and, uh, uh, policy seven ninety-nine, post issuance compliance policy. Are there any comments at this time on these policies? Policy committee has not met since our last meeting, or?
We, we did an email, um, because we had to update policy five thirty-four. There were a couple of questions and we had to meet with the director and that information was sent to the policy committee, but there were no questions, so we moved forward with it.
Perfect. I understand it's just kind of lining things up with the statute.
Correct, and then there was just a question about meal charges.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. In that case, we move on to item number ten, which is policies requiring review, discussion and action. This is the third and final reading and cop, public comment on, and we all, uh, after that, we will have a motion to approve these policy updates. Our policies in this round are, uh, policy one oh two, equal education opportunity, policy one oh three, complaints, student, employees, parents, and other persons. Policy one oh four, school district mission statements. Policy five thirty, immunization requirements. Policy six nineteen, staff development for standards. And policy seven oh four, development and maintenance of inventory, fixed assets, and a fixed asset accounting system. Any comments on these policies? All right, I would take a motion and a second, please, to approve these. Motion by Pamela, second. Second by Alyssa. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next, we'll go to Ms. Naska again. She's very popular tonight for our budget enrollment report.
Um, if we look at, did we pick January or February last month?
I think we would have done January.
Okay, so, so I, I wouldn't hold stock like considerably in February's numbers yet because it's only the tenth day of the month. So it does look like in, enrollment is down a little bit. Mainly in our high school year, or in our high school year, quite a bit. Our intermediate school also, um, elementary's still holding stable. But again, it's the beginning of the month. I don't know. I would.
And that's the first grade of stuff we've had at this point because of the dates.
It is, yeah, it's, so I, I'm not concerned yet. I just, like I said, we, we just keep watching it and we'll keep looking over time. I'm not sure why they've decreased, Kelly or you, or-
Just students leaving, but we've had a handful of students coming in too. This is usually, that's kind of the, mostly that, because that was the year, so it's kind of common.
Yeah, it's still, it fluctuates a lot. I'm not, I'm already concerned with where it's at, but at this point.
If this number held, what would that impact our budget, just for hypotheticals?
I mean, we'll see with the budget of four here. I don't have the exact number at the top, but I think it's very important.
Yeah, for that projection, eighteen sixty-three, it would still be at eighteen sixty-seven, so it'd still be.
Okay. It would, we, we have a very conservative approach to enrollment. Oh, that's what I meant for my request. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so it looks like we're still, we're still within tolerance.
We looked at some trend data and it seems like throughout the year, we used about twenty-eight students the last few years, so we based our, our number on that. So it was conservative approach.
Great, I always appreciate that because I, I, I'd rather us, uh, under promise, over deliver on this.
Yeah, you don't wanna give money back.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions about this today?
So I budgeted for eighteen forty-eight.
All right, excellent, thank you. Any other questions, or are we good to move on? All right, we have our administrator information reports next, so anyone wanna add anything?
Sure, all sir. You can see the story I'm on there, we talked about our kindness and respect retreats, and I'm not sure the board knows what those are, but there's a company called Deep Frontiers that offers a number of different retreats, both for staff and for students. For a number of years, we've done three different levels of, um, retreats here. Seniors, we do a wisdom retreat, probably the last couple of weeks of their career, where they kind of go through some things. We do a, um, ninth grade kindness retreat and a fourth grade, no, fourth grade kindness, ninth grade respect retreat. What, what happens is for the ninth grade retreat, our seniors act as group leaders, role models, and we select those. Typically, the juniors will enact ads, group leaders for the fourth grade, except this year, we had a college chemistry mandatory lab they had to be on campus for, saying called the stage they couldn't. So at the last minute, well, not the last minute, but a few weeks before, we're like, what are we gonna do? So, well, it's all for our next, our next juniors, so, and I got great reports from the intermediate school, all those, uh, tenth graders worked with the fourth graders, so.
I see a nodded head by a fourth grade.
So, you know, people were a little nervous, you know, now you're getting now the kids that are, you know, a little younger and not quite as mature, but I had very great reports, so, proud of our kids and, you know, it's, it's a little tricky with juniors, a lot to have to look at, like the kids that have gotten to the honor society. Well, with the softboards, we really didn't have that, so we just took some regulations from some staff who worked with them and got a great group of kids, so.
Fantastic. To echo that, I would say it was the best group of high school helpers that we have had in a very long time.
Fantastic.
They were exceptional.
Fantastic, love to hear that.
Mr. Kluter, um, just a quick word about, uh, preschool, we got a registration from last week, it's, I brought up a couple times, um, we had twenty-six people from the district who were there in the building that night and helped out, and so, um, were available to parents, ask questions, meet and greet, so it was, uh, it was, uh, a little bit more of an expansive experience than we've had in the past, which was nice. We kind of organized a little activity for kids to do to keep the kids and families on move throughout the building, and so they got to see a lot more of the building and got to meet a lot more people than what we've done in the past, so, um, got some good feedback on that, um, and, uh, um, we are currently still working on getting, uh, numbers for next year's kindergarten, um, more subtle, but, so, it was a good start.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. Ingless.
I wasn't at the, the January meeting, so just want to welcome our, our new board members. Thank you for taking the time to, to serve our community. And on my last report too, I did, uh, speak a little bit about the Terry Ryan Award that was received by Coach Mike Fire. That's, you know, kind of toward the Midwest, the Mississippi, and I gave all that award and I just wanted to make sure that I kind of went back to that to publicly congratulate him for a very prestigious honor. Our winter season, some of them have, are starting to, to wrap up. One act play had a fantastic performance at the subsection round, um, ended up advancing to the sectional round, um, and it was, uh, they performed on leap, it was a fantastic performance. If you got a chance to get up and, and do that. Two weekends ago, the, the dance team wrapped up their season, a fantastic performance by them. You know, one of those where I was there watching and a parent from another district turned around and just said, this dance program has come a long way. And just kind of, I was a good testament to, to where that program is at. Uh, we find out tonight what seed our wrestling team will get for their playoffs, which will start, the section rounds will start on Thursday, um, and then basketball for boys and girls will start to wrap up towards the end of February. So just kind of thinking the spring a little bit, I know we're gonna have some cold temperatures tomorrow, but these winter seasons are nearing end. So thank you to all of the, all of our coaches and advisors that are part of the activity program for, for, thank you.
Ms. Stewart, anything else?
Um, just say, we'll play one up, Adam too, register tonight with violin and it's good to kind of change it up a little bit to start, what we did that night, and I think just, the biggest thing too, just along kindergarten, preschool, in St. Peter's Church, and then not just focus on the one, he just, we just need to continue and update, you know, information for families that register, and so, and for them to stress that, they miss the danger that, you know, just the constant, you know, here's where people are registered, we have questions, you know, information like that. So, um, so with violin, it was good to see more people in the, in their rooms too, so it gave families more to do than any else. And then with just facilities, um, we can still, we have more, we can do events taking place, but they're wrapping up, so it's a huge, thank you for our custodians, for all the work that they do in hours, but also to all our, like, our booster groups that host these events, and when we can, it really shows how much work is done and that's just done by, it's like a simple, it's all our work that's coming and using our spaces and, um, kind of putting on, and showcase our, our facilities and then bringing more people in to the facilities as well, so, so thank you to all those groups.
Ms. Naska, anything else to add tonight? Kind of been our start anyway.
No, I'm good.
Dr. Perry.
I just have a few things to mention. First, I'd like to congratulate our transportation department. I just heard today that they received a grant for about seven thousand dollars and that's for additional cameras, and the cameras will be for the external part so that, um, they can monitor the stop arm, and we spend a lot of time on stop arm violations, so this is a, a safety measure for our kids, so that's really exciting. Um, and it was a collaborative effort between, um, our district and then the Minnesota State Control Officer, cohere, School Resource Officer, and then, um, Benton County Sheriff's Office. So we're, we're hearing, um, we'll hear more information about when the cameras will be and when the grant money will, will come to the district, but again, that was pretty exciting that we were, I think, the only one that received a full ask for what we had asked for, um, for funding. Just a reminder to the board, our indoor ear quality, to, um, this week is a big week because we have a pre-bid walkthrough that's happening on the thirteenth, and it starts at two thirty and it's going to be held in, um, the High School Media Center, so for those that do that, would like to come, if there's no participation, you'll just sit and listen, um, and then they'll walk through the building as well, so you're, you're invited to come. And, um, we also are going to be hosting the chamber meeting on February thomia, so that's coming up at twelve o'clock. Um, the kitchen is set with a wonderful meal from what I understand, we've been talking about it for a while, and then, um, our presentation will be about the indoor ear quality project and I talked to Darwin, he's going to help and we're going to bring people through kind of areas that you don't see in the school, so people see like what it takes to eat and just some of the boilers, so things like that, that you did not normally see in, in the building. Resource Training and Solutions, there's a ballot for you, for each of the board members that are looking for a vacant director position, so if you'd like to vote, you are able to do that, and the information regarding the candidates, um, is from Sacra Rapids Vice. There's information on the back of the ballots, if you'd like to do that. And then I would also like to take just a minute to thank Erin because this is her last fourth meeting with us. Erin has accepted another position, so we're meeting SMS, but we have been very fortunate, Erin, to work with you, um, over the last year and some, because Erin walked into, as you know, opponents' nest and had grit and worked with us and really was able to give great- and really was able to give great guidance and straighten a lot of things out, especially for, for the future and stability of the district. So on behalf of the district, Erin, thank you so much and we are going to miss you greatly. Welcome your new position.
Meeting events and notices, not a comprehensive list. We will have our superintendent interviews on January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth as we did. There'll be times denoted to once we hear back from our interviewees, exactly, their schedules.
So our times might move up.
They might move up. That's what we're, that's the next, that's our next step, is hammering down, locking the times down. So we will have our regular board meeting on the seventeenth of March here at the media center, same time, same channel, five thirty P M. We now have an open forum for our people in the audience, anyone wants to say anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. From the news person has noted to report, I'll, I'll have to take that. Anything?
No, no, absolutely.
We're all good, it looks like.
Excellent, excellent.
Well, we now have an opportunity for board member comments. Mr. Wilson, want to start us off?
I have nothing today.
Okay. Ms. Wissner?
I don't have anything. Can I do this?
Mr. Anderson, nothing today. Ms. Kika?
Preschool and kindergarten registration was a success. It was fun. We celebrated baby Pete. They took pictures of future students with falcon wings. It just was a big hit. It was one of those nights that you know, everything's went really well. A lot gets done in a few hours at this event. I want to thank you all the staff who worked a long day to make it happen. Teachers, all office staff, EAs, we have a music department, food service, media center, the nurse, transportation, community ed, and Mr. Culver. Just a great job. I also think maybe there's a possibility our numbers could be better than we, we expected. Congratulations to our one act play, great job. They've been working a long time for, for this opportunity. Our third grade concert was, was a success. It was a rather unique experience, almost a mini musical about the turtle and the hare waiting for spring to wait and wait.
Stephanie?
I just want to thank Erin for the work she's done since she's been for the district and we will miss you and we will see you very much.
Alyssa?
I just want to congratulate our archery team, who all they did this last weekend in Princeton, they did fabulous. High school, middle school, and elementary school, we are doing really well in that area and I'm very proud of how dedicated these kids are. And I also just, the third grade concert was really cool, so they did, they did a great job, so.
I will echo the third grade concert. I got to go to that. That was a lot of fun. It was not just a concert, it's a play and the kids all do these different parts. They're bringing our, our, I, I've seen that for a while, but I think our arts programming is probably as strong as it's ever been. From elementary through high school, between performing arts and, and everything else, so it's awesome to see. Erin, you came into a rough situation. I got to tell you, so I think one of the very first things Dr. Perry did when coming here is look at the, the, the financial issues and just, and bringing SMS on board was like one of the first things. I think it's one of the best choices we've had and I think we were very fortunate that you were the person from SMS to come here all this time. So I would say thank you. And then finally, our, our junior high speech team, which is not very big, you know, they go in a, they go in a band to their speech meets. But holy cow, they just had their conference meet last Thursday and the team tied for third to the conference, which is amazing. And then individuals in drama category, Dolan Murphy took first place and Miranda Gruen took second place. And then Natalie Wilhelm took fourth place. In the humorous category, Maggie Schneider took second place. And then the creative expression, Haley, Jimmy Lovideski took third place and Haley Bradbury took second place. This is amazing. Good job to the team. Congratulations to Maria Zinkke for all her hard work with the team and doing all. This is fabulous. She's our middle school and high school speech coach. So again, like I say, our arts better than I think ever in here for ever.
With that said, I will happily take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sharon. Second, I'll give it to Pam tonight. I'm going to go really high. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned at exactly six oh five.